Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 21st, 2019. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Thank you very much. Item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, additions?
Nothing from staff, sir, but I would note that we have a large contingent of the Lions Club here. We may want to consider moving that agenda item.
Counselor Whiting?
I will first off offer one item to move to consent, item 10A1, and put the Lions in that slot. We have consensus. And approve the agenda as amended.
One second.
I have a motion and a second for the amended agenda. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, which is a consent agenda, and there's already been an add. Let's see if we can get a motion here and see if that's acceptable. Counselor Lehman?
Just so I understand, that add is 10A1 Financial Review.
Right, and switch with 10B3.
And then 10B3 will move up to where 10A1 is.
Correct.
I'll move the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for modified consent agenda. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. -- excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Mars and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for May 21st of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the May 7th, 2019 meeting. 4A2 approves the suspension of City Code 114.11 for Muddy Cow's teepee event on June 21st, 22nd of 2019. 4A3 approves liquor licenses for 2019 to 2020 and waives the requirements of City Code Section 114.02 for Global Restaurant Group Incorporated doing business as Dangerfields, for Stone Brook Golf Club LLC, and for the Knights of Columbus Home Association Incorporated. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC055, which approves interim use permit to allow temporary concrete crushing as well as storage for construction and other materials. 4C1 approves hiring a new public works park supervisor at grade 180, step five of the city's 2019 non-union pay plan. 4C2 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC057, which awards a contract to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $1,970,374.55 for the 2019 pavement rehabilitation project, which is CIP-TAC19-TAC002. 4C3 authorizes the execution of Amendment Number Two to the Joint Powers Agreement establishing transient fleet management software collaboration. And finally, 10A1 is the monthly financial review.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second for a modified consent agenda. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. If you could come forward and state your name and address for the record and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. This is for an item not on the agenda.
Are we on? Oh, okay. I guess we're on the agenda.
Okay, not a problem. Anybody else like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we would move ahead then. Item number six, items removed from consent. There were none. We would move forward then to 7A, modification of a TIF 18 for Canterbury. This will be a public hearing. Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is now open. Michael is going to present. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a -- excuse me, an amendment for TIF District Number 18, which is the Canterbury TIF District. And I have Tom Dunaway here from Baker Tilly, formerly Springstead. They were merged into another company, and he will talk about the changes for both TIF District Number 18 and the public hearing for TIF District Number 19.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. As Michael mentioned, my name is Tom Dunaway. I am with Baker Tilly. We are a municipal advisory firm. We were formerly Springstead, and we've now joined with Baker Tilly. It's been a good transition. We've added a ton of extra capacity and expertise within our company, and I gained approximately 3,500 new coworkers. So it's been a good joint venture with for us. So tonight, to begin with, I'm here to speak about the proposed modification to TIF District Number 18. Anytime a TIF district is proposed to be modified in order to expand the boundary or increase the budget, a public hearing is required to be held. It's the same public process that is required for the creation of a TIF district, where the notice has to be made in the public paper, comment has -- or TIF plans have to be provided to the county and the school district 30 days in advance, the public hearing, and so on. So tonight, we are here to hold the public hearing and take public comment on it. And I just wanted to provide in advance of that, an overview as to what the proposed changes to the Canterbury TIF plan are, which is TIF District Number 18. So the purpose, and the main purpose of the modification to the TIF plan was to incorporate or expand the boundary of the TIF plan to include four new parcels within the TIF plan. The intention for creating those or adding those new parcels to the TIF plan was to allow future road improvements to be undertaken within the boundaries of the TIF district. TIF dollars, certain percentages of TIF dollars have to be spent within the boundaries of the TIF district, and it's simply easier for those parcels to be brought within the TIF district to allow that construction and those future expenditures to be made within the TIF district. Helps ease reporting requirements and make things cleaner and simpler if those parcels are within the TIF district. So as part of changing the TIF plan, as kind of as we were under the hood, we also decided to make a couple small changes to the TIF plan itself as it relates to the budget for revenues and expenditures, as well as we also had to amend the redevelopment TIF district qualification study to include those four new parcels to verify that they were also eligible for inclusion within a redevelopment TIF district. And additionally, we updated the parcel listing within the TIF district because when this TIF plan was originally adopted back in March of 2018, a number of parcels have been replatted since then. So we updated the TIF plan to reference the new parcel IDs and legal descriptions for those parcels that were subsequently changed following the creation of the district. So as it relates to the increase of the budget for revenues and expenditures, we did make a couple changes. The first was to change the first receipt of the tax increment revenue to taxes payable 2021. So we delayed the first receipt by a year from the prior iteration of the plan to more closely align that first year of tax increment revenue with the increased development that's going to occur on the site. The development's occurring at a slightly slower pace than originally projected, so this will allow a slightly higher amount of TIF revenue to be generated by the district and more closely time that first receipt of TIF revenue with that construction. Additionally, the increase to the budget incorporates the additional parcels, and it updates the current tax rates. When the TIF plan was originally created, we were working off of proposed tax rates. We now have final tax rates, so there was a small change there. And then also, we did update the interest calculation for the interest expense line item, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Most importantly, the TIF plan and the proposed development scenario within the TIF plan incorporates no change to the overall proposed development scenario. So we're still talking about the same level of development being undertaken within the site. We're simply just adding four parcels to the district and then making some small modifications due to changes that have occurred since the creation of the district. So on this map here, you can see the existing boundary is the black boundary of the TIF district, and you can see in red the four parcels that were added. Here we have the modified budget from the TIF plan. So the most important line item is the TIF eligible public expenditures line item is not changed at 33 million. Where you do see a change is first you see a total change, that's a slight increase from the overall budget prior, and that's due to our TIF revenues themselves going up very slightly due to that delay in receipt and due to the change in the tax rates for the TIF district. So the TIF district itself did increase, the projected revenues for the TIF district did increase very slightly by less than 1%. So in order to have a set of expenditures that match our revenue budget, we kept the modified budget the same as it relates to the public infrastructure expenditures, but we did adjust the timing and the calculation for the interest expense because the incurrence of these public infrastructure expenditures is occurring later than originally projected within the TIF plan, less interest will be incurred on the repayment of those expenditures. So we had a decrease in this line item from approximately 42.2 million down to 39.9 million. As a result of still needing our revenues to match our expenditures or expenditures to match our revenues, we increased the column within the TIF budget for other TIF eligible expenditures. That allows our revenues to still tie out to our expenditures. So costs incurred under this category, it's important to remember to begin with, with a TIF plan and the budget within the TIF plan, we're creating additional authority or authority for the city to potentially enter into future obligations. Having budget amounts within here does not obligate the city to expend those dollars. It just provides flexibility and the authority to incur costs under these categories if the city were to so choose. So other, under the other TIF eligible expenditures, we increased that amount due to the savings realized on the interest side of the expense budget. It doesn't obligate the city to expend any additional dollars within the TIF district. It doesn't obligate the city to incur any costs within this category. It does provide the flexibility if you were to choose to do so at a later date. That said, and most importantly, as it relates to any of those additional expenditures, any expenditure incurred under that line item would be subject to and require city council approval to be incurred. So this modification provides additional flexibility, but it doesn't obligate the city to do anything, and it doesn't require that additional dollars to be spent under that line item. It just provides the flexibility to do so if you were to choose to do so at a later date.
Tom, just a little more explanation on the other TIF eligible expenses. Looking at your document here on page 19, and it's listed that same amount of 2.86766, and here on page 19, it's listed as surplus tax increment. Can you help me explain that?
Page 19, within the TIF plan, it's -- pull up the TIF plan here. Okay, so that's the amortization schedule, correct?
Yes.
So yeah, so that's the interest savings. So that amortization schedule, if you were to compare that to the old plan, you would see that prior amount of 283,000. So that the amount of tax increment necessary to fund the $33 million in principal cost due to the changing date of the issuance of the note and the different timing resulted in less increment being required to repay the potentially $33 million in project cost at 6% interest. So because the interest line item is lower, that creates an amount that's not needed to fund that 33 million amount. So in that column, it's referred to as surplus. It's only surplus as it relates to the repayment of that 33 million in potential project costs. So that's where we get that amount from. So that amount then carries over back to the TIF budget up here and is an addition to the 283,000 that was there originally.
Is it truly an expenditure?
It would not be an expenditure. The amount that's within the budget here, the 2.8 million, is budget authority. It provides you the ability to incur costs under that line item that would still be eligible for TIF reimbursement, but it doesn't obligate the city to incur any costs. It just provides you the budget authority. So if you wanted to incur costs under that authority, you could enter into future additional obligations, be it pay-as-you-go agreements, bond issuances and the like, but it doesn't obligate the city to expend anything.
And then just on the graph that you're showing on the screen here, on the top line for the 33 million, that's for public infrastructure. That number hasn't changed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Tom, if the city chooses not to spend that money, what happens?
The city only is able to reimburse itself or reimburse expenses that are incurred. So if the city does not enter into any additional obligations, the amount that was incurred would be the same and would potentially pay off the district earlier. So if there were to be interest savings as a result of this, which we've kind of calculated here, that would result in a lower overall cost for the development or for the district as a whole and would potentially allow it to be paid off earlier.
Lower cost, lower term, lower interest.
Exactly.
Okay. Proceed.
So again, here I mentioned the overall change to the TIF budget as far as revenues was very minor, less than 1%. I think it was 0.4% was the overall change in the total revenues. We did receive a letter very, very late this afternoon from Scott County that did provide comments, so we have to provide them with the TIF plan 30 days prior to the public hearing. That provides them opportunity to provide comments. They did make four points. So the first point they did make was that the original draft or the prior draft version of the TIF plan included a reference to an old PID. That parcel ID number was corrected and is correct in the version that is in front of you of the TIF plan tonight. Additionally, they provided comments regarding a different amount for the base value of the TIF district. I was not able to have the time to compare how they came up with the base value that they calculated versus the base value I calculated. Ultimately, it doesn't impact the overall TIF revenue projections because the TIF revenue projections are based on the incremental growth in values. They're based on the new value coming online. So if that starting point is a little bit different depending on existing market value within the district, the overall TIF revenue is not going to be changed by that. So ultimately, that number will be set by the county auditor at the time that the TIF district is certified. So that's the response to point one. Response to point two is they did point out that one of the four parcels that's being added is currently within the Sandmar TIF district. We are aware of that, and one of the things that will be brought back to you prior to the approval of this TIF modification is a resolution removing that parcel from that TIF district, which would then enable it to be brought into this TIF district, so...
From one district to another?
Exactly. So that's, that can be done by resolution in this circumstance because there's, there was a growth in value in that parcel.
Would there be any negative impact to the previous TIF District 512?
It would slightly reduce because that parcel is generating a small amount of increment. No development happened on that parcel. It's still vacant land, but the value of that land did increase from the time that district was created. So it is creating a small amount of tax increment. So taking that parcel out of that district would shrink the amount of tax increment being generated within that district, but it wouldn't largely impact it. Because of that, we are able to take that parcel out by resolution only and not requiring a public hearing for that action.
And if it came into the Canterbury TIF, that it would come in at today's value?
Correct. It would come out at the new value and create a small increase in taxable market value for the city as a whole and all the other taxing jurisdictions.
Okay.
Parcel, or point number three in the comments letter from Scott County is a little bit interesting. So when a new TIF district is being created, we have to identify any building permit that has been issued for any of the parcels in the 18 months prior to that TIF district being created. That way, that value is added to the base value of the district. So they pointed out that a building permit was issued for one of the parcels that was already within the TIF district at the time it was created. The parcel itself, the ID number changed because it had been replatted, but that parcel and that existing land was already within the original TIF district. So therefore, any building permits that were issued on that permit occurred after the creation of the TIF district. So the comment that they make in number three is actually not applicable to this and should not be, shouldn't, does not need to be included within this TIF plan because that parcel was already within the modified or within the existing TIF district at the time it was created. So the only thing we needed to really update as it relates to this modification was if any building permits had been issued for the four new parcels that are being added. If this was a new TIF district that was just being created now, this point would be relevant, but it's not relevant because the TIF district was actually created prior to this building permit having been issued.
How would that affect the, so the building permit wasn't included, but how does the base value of that parcel then is based on the value prior to the building permit?
Yes, because the building permit was issued after the creation of the TIF district, which we're always very cognizant of to make sure that those building permits are not issued until after the TIF district has been approved, there shouldn't be any impact due to that building permit having been issued because it was issued subsequent to the approval of the TIF district. It's just somewhat of a unique circumstance where this TIF district was actually created back in March of 2018, and that permit was issued afterwards. So it's a little bit of a unique situation here from the county's perspective, and they probably didn't consider that this was actually an existing TIF district. And then finally, they do mention that two of the parcels are tax exempt, and the TIF plan assumes no change to the tax exempt status of those properties. So the potential next steps for tonight would be to hold the public hearing and take public comments, and then at a future meeting, the following will be considered. One would be the adoption of a resolution removing that parcel from the existing TIF district. And then additionally, there would also be an adoption of a resolution if you so choose, approving the modification of the TIF district, and as well as an adoption of a resolution approving a modification to the development agreement. And we can talk about more of those at that later meeting. So with that, that's kind of a long-winded way of saying very little is actually changing to this TIF plan beyond the addition of those four parcels. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions of Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate to the folks at home that this is for the infrastructure, not a new change to the TIF plan like you mentioned for economic development TIF, but to support the infrastructure as we talked about.
Correct. It's the intended rerouting of Berenshur Road is proposed to come up through this area and join up with this intersection up here. So by including these new parcels, we're then bringing those expenditures within the boundaries of the TIF district. Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I actually have a couple of questions. The first is the project, the original project doesn't change, but I think I just heard you say that the road layout's going to change and go up through these properties.
I believe the road was always intended to be along those lines. We're just now bringing it within the boundaries of the TIF district.
That's correct.
So, okay, so why didn't, why weren't these properties included in the beginning if we knew that the road was going to go through them?
I would defer to staff a little bit on that.
Michael?
Mayor and council, so the original alignment at Berenshur wasn't nailed down, so the city has since hired SRF to do the preliminary concept design. And it does go through that parcel. We're limited by statute to...
25% can be outside the district.
25% can be outside the district. This is a major intersection with the Signal, and so it was a recommendation that parcel be brought into the district so that 25%, we have other expenses outside of the district in the plan. We can stay below that, plus the city's administrative costs.
Come out of it.
Come out of that 25%, so this protects the city's administrative costs.
The original alignment that we, just to follow up with Mr. Lehman, that original alignment to hook up to Industrial Boulevard there with Berenshur, that's still going to go through, right?
Mayor and council, that's correct. So if you remember when this started, the county was still working on their plans for County Highway 83. There was a big discussion going on whether this road would get straightened out, what would happen to this parcel on the corner. The final alignment is in place now and working with the county and engineering. This is confirmed as the alignment, so now we're bringing that parcel in. By bringing that parcel in, we had to bring in the other adjoining parcels, too. So one of them is the Scott County Workforce Center, and one of them's a crane company. One is a former outboard motor location, and then where the road goes through is a current vacant parcel, out parcel actually, that's owned by J&amp;J Minneapolis, which is the parent company of Sandmar. So some, council asked earlier, it's about $30,000 to $40,000 impact to their TIF. So when that property gets acquired, it's not a total take because they'll end up with about half that rectangle left over. There'll have to be some compensation made to make up for that $35,000 to $40,000 from the TIF.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lehman, continue.
Yeah, the 2.8 million in other expenses, could that be used for acquiring these properties?
Yes, Councilmember Lehman, members of the council, that is a category under which that expenditure could be made.
And then the next question would be, can we go back to them four properties?
Yeah.
There's, if I'm reading this right, there's some of these properties that are currently tax exempt and some that are not?
Correct. The Scott County Workforce Center is currently a tax exempt property, and we're assuming that that property will maintain and remain tax exempt following the creation or following its inclusion of the, within the TIF district. So it would be, it would essentially be held harmless by being part of the TIF district.
Doesn't impact the TIF.
Correct.
Either plus or minus, right?
Correct.
Well, and the loss of the revenue that you're not receiving doesn't impact the tax revenue coming to the city for services?
Correct. Because that property is tax exempt, but it's not generating any tax revenue.
Okay, so the other properties are tax paying properties.
Correct.
They currently, they currently pay a tax into the city for general city, general levy services. So if we're going to capture them dollars and pull them out of what normally comes into the city for services and put it into development, where does that money get made up at?
Yeah, because when a TIF district is created, the base value for those parcels is set, and it's maintained, and then that base value will continue to exist. So the existing market value that's applied to those properties and the existing level of taxes that is generated by those properties will continue to be collected as general tax dollars. It's only that incremental growth, if any, were to occur.
I get that. I get that, but that incremental growth on every other property in Shakopee pays additional taxes based on the valuation, which increases. I'll use my own property as an example. Every year, the property value goes up 7% to 13%. Your tax rate is applied to that higher value. Your tax dollar amount is then higher, and that money comes into the city and the county and the school and everybody else. So these properties won't be contributing an additional amount like everybody else. They'll be stuck at a flat level.
So mayor and council, they'll be, whatever the value is when the district is amended will be the value of the city, the school district and the county and all the other taxing agencies get today, they'll get continuing. The difference on this versus the other district when we had this discussion is one of these will be a road, so only the portion that's the roadway will now be tax exempt. The rest of that will go back on the tax rolls to the adjoining property. So the school district, the county property today pays no taxes. So the only two properties that currently pay taxes and will still continue to pay taxes are the outboard marine site and the crane company, and there are no current redevelopment plans, so there's no, the only increment that they would potentially see would be some future increase in value of those. The outboard motor location potentially will be, will end up becoming a regional detention basin for County Highway 83, so it's probably not going to generate any tax value because nothing's going to get built on that and won't require any city services.
Okay. And...
I have a follow-up to that.
Sure.
Counselor Whiting?
In the event that the tax exempt property becomes, how taxable, it still remains the same in the TIF, is that correct?
So it would come in at whatever value that it gets sold for, and the administrator, we've talked to the county, and we know what the price is, and my guess is it's highly unlikely anytime soon that it will be coming into the district. So it will not be redeveloped because the basis line would be so high.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Dunaway, is it safe to say that the reason we're bringing this in is so we can then get to the property where we're going to build the road?
Correct. It's to, it's to allow the expenditures that would be incurred to construct those roads to be within the boundaries of the TIF district.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my last question was, there was a whole bunch of property ID numbers that were put up, both on his documents and what we have, and some of them are really close to each other, maybe one digit here or there differences, and I was wondering if anybody double-checked these to make sure that they're all correct?
We did, we did double-check them, and they have also been double-checked by the county as well.
All right.
So ultimately, the boundaries of the TIF plan are identified in the map, and that's the intent is for those, all the parcels within that boundary to be included within the certification of the TIF district.
Okay.
More questions of our financial advisor or staff? You have more to present? You have more to present?
Not for, I do for the TIF nineteen, but I guess I'll, I'll, I'll take a seat and wait for that public hearing.
So...
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and make comment in regard to this amendment for the modification for the boundary for the Canterbury TIF District number eighteen, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. This is a public hearing. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close public hearing. And a second, uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? The action requested tonight is to, uh, basically continue this to our meeting on June eighteenth. Is that when all these other final documents will be ready? Michael?
Mayor and council, we hope so. We've had discussions with Sandmar, um, so that's at least moving. We will be working, excuse me, with Baker Tilly and the Engineering Department to finalize some of the infrastructure numbers. And then work with the, uh, Contract for Private Development to adjust the numbers based on the reality we've seen today. So you've already approved the reconstruction of Twelfth Avenue. They're working on the numbers for Berenshur right now. So on the eighteenth, we'll hopefully have the final numbers.
Any other questions of staff? Public meeting is closed. And we're asked not to take any action. Would we table this then till the June eighteenth?
No, sir, you just need to close the public hearing and then it will be brought forward when it's appropriate. We believe it'll be June eighteenth, but it's...
No action tonight?
Correct.
And it'll be brought back on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Everybody okay with that?
Well, just to be clear, it may not, but that's the goal. That's why we're not continuing it to June eighteenth. So we're just closing the public hearing.
Yeah? So we don't need a motion that we're gonna...
No, you've already closed the public hearing.
Not take any action, right? Okay. All right, well, that completes that then. We would move ahead then to item number seven B. Modification for TIF District nineteen for the Riverfront Bluff. Michael, welcome back. Or Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is now open. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council, so, um, Mr. Dunaway will go through this district, but I can tell you the main items here are we're adding in the three properties on the corner that you all have approved for acquisition either by us or by the developer. They've taken kind of a guesstimate based on some preliminary discussions to set the cap on the total expenditures. So we're hoping, uh, June eighteenth will bring back, uh, we're meeting tomorrow with the architects 'cause they're changing the overall design to include this corner, make some improvements to the project. But we were required to put kind of our best guess in, um, the TIF plan, and that's what we've done.
Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you. So yes, as Michael mentioned, again, the intent is, uh, for the public hearing tonight is to discuss the modification of TIF District nineteen. So again, uh, as mentioned, the purpose of this modification is to increase the proposed boundary of the TIF district. So again, we made a couple, uh, changes to the TIF plan as part of incorporating these changes. We've included the addition of the three new parcels. Uh, we've increased the TIF plan budget for revenue and expenditures as it relates to a larger building proposal or scenario. And then we've also amended the redevelopment TIF District qualification study to include the new parcels and verify that they are also eligible for inclusion within a redevelopment TIF district. So specifically, as it comes to, or as it relates to the increase for the budget for revenues and expenditures, we did choose to delay the first receipt of tax increment to taxes payable twenty twenty-two. Again, uh, when this was originally created a year ago, we anticipated development occurring sooner. Now, due to the addition of the, the additional properties, the, the development or the construction will happen at a slightly later date. So again, we've elected to delay that first receipt to allow it to maximize the value of the TIF district. Uh, the, the increased budget incorporates the additional parcels and incorporates, again, the current tax rates and incorporates an expanded development scenario, uh, due to the increased development site. Uh, we've anticipated approximately an increase of approximately fifty units to bring the total to a hundred and seventy-five total units. That's kind of, as Michael mentioned, a, a guesstimate on our part as to what the total scope of the development might be. Uh, we had to come up with an estimate in order to prepare a TIF, set of TIF projections and have this TIF plan in place. So it, it, it's likely to be somewhere around there, but it might not be that exact amount. Uh, so the TIF plan and the budget and revenues, uh, for revenues and expenditures was updated to reflect those changes, uh, for both project costs incurred by the developer as well as the city. And it maintains the same proposed TIF sharing ratio from the original TIF plan as it relates to reimbursing the city and the developer for their respective costs. So this is the TIF plan, uh, boundary. So again, you can see here the expanded boundaries of the TIF district. Originally, these three parcels right here on the corner were not within the boundaries of the TIF district. So we've expanded the boundaries to include those three parcels. Uh, so here you can see the, I'm gonna skip first to the proposed budget for revenues for the TIF district. So because we're talking about an expanded development proposal, we have more units being created potentially on the site, which will result in more market value created on the site, which will ultimately result in more TIF revenue being created on the site. So the total revenue projection cap and estimate for purposes of the TIF plan is approximately eleven million, seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. So based on that set of revenue projections, we created the following TIF revenue budget. And you can see the rates have changed here between the original budget and the modified budget. And that the fact that the new total for the modified budget does tie out to our total projected revenues. So the developer reimbursable category does increase. Again, this is, provides you with budget authority to enter into pay-as-you-go obligations with the developer up to this total amount. Similarly, provides the city with additional authority to incur additional interfund loan amounts in an increased amount from the prior budget. And similarly, the anticipated amount of interest and, uh, incurred on both those obligations has been increased. Again, these are budget, this is a budget authority to enter into actual obligations at a later date that fall within this cap. Similarly, we've, we've projected a similar increase in the administrative expenses. Uh, so in total, the, the total amount of the budget increase is approximately three, almost four million dollars from the original version of the TIF plan. So again, tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold the public hearing and take public comments. And then, uh, if you so choose, you can adopt a resolution approving the modification of the TIF District number nineteen. That'll set the TIF plan, it'll set the budget authority for the TIF district. And then at a future meeting, uh, the following will be considered, which is the adoption of a resolution approving the modification of the development agreement. So that, that resolution, that mod, that development agreement would actually allow the city to enter into obligations under which the, the TIF plan provides authority.
Um, questions of Tom? Go, can I go back on one slide?
Mm-hmm.
The next one, there you go. So, the second line item, city land acquisition. We've addition, we've purchased additional land and houses, um, and that's now increased to one point two and we will get paid, paid back from the, on that, excuse me?
Yeah, the, uh, the inclusion or the increase of that interfund loan, uh, budget authority would allow you to incur additional costs under that category and allow you to reimburse yourselves for additional cost incurred there.
And then the same with line item, uh, four on the loan interest payments is increased?
Yes, correctly. When, when it comes to interfund loans, the city is able to reimburse itself at a, at a set interest rate. So the city would be able to reimburse itself both the principal amount of the land acquisition as well as any interest incurred on the repayment of that because the TIF revenue is ultimately gonna come in, in future years over time. So allows the city to reimburse itself, the interest incurred on that as well.
Other questions? Counselor Lehman?
Your, uh, your assumptions for estimated market value on a larger project? Uh, I think you said a hundred and seventy-five units?
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at page fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. All of these number, numbers are derived at a hundred and ninety-two units? So I guess the question I have is, what's in front of me here on paper is a hundred and ninety-two units? Is it the same as what you showed at, at a hundred and seventy-five?
Uh, yeah, I think that when we originally set the TIF projections, we believed it might be a hundred and ninety-two units. Uh, we anticipate the value increase to be the same 'cause what we ultimately did is we increased the market value of the site proportionally to the amount of additional market value, or the, excuse me. We increased the market value of the site proportionate to the amount of additional land area being added, maintaining the same ratio as before. So when I first did that, that math, I came out at a hundred and ninety-two units. Uh, and comments, and comments provided by the city, uh, by the city's TIF attorney and staff, it might actually be a slightly smaller amount of units. We, we anticipate the proportional increase in value to be the same and to be what's based, what the TIF plan is based off of.
And then the other question is probably a combination for both you and staff. We had some issues on the north, west corner of this combined parcels, some old dump cleanup contamination and stuff. Do we know if there's any other on the expanded site? Or is that something we're gonna find out? The question for the other side, guy standing next to, if we did, is there something in here that would protect us from that? Or do we have a way to pay for it?
So mayor and council, yes, so if we go back to the, there you go, there we go. See, we went from two point eight million to four point two million. So some of that's to pick up the additional costs on the developer's side of some land they're acquiring. But we've also built in some allowance there because the feeling, based on the preliminary tests that were done, so the northwest corner of the site's the garbage dump. And as you get closer to the street and closer to the three properties we purchased, it's solid bedrock. So we're assuming that to get the parking to flow and other things, they're gonna be doing a lot of bedrock removal on the corner. So we've built in a number. And that's why, Mr. Dunaway mentioned, uh, it doesn't really matter the number of units. They looked at the overall cost of the project. So by adding that three houses that increase the cost of the project, X number of dollars based on the land area for the money they're already spending on the rest of the project. So whether it's a hundred and seventy-five units or a hundred and sixty units or a hundred and eighty units, it's not gonna matter, the value is still there. And that value is generated by them increasing the overall size of the footprint of the project. And we don't know yet, 'cause we haven't seen the final plans, but whether that corner becomes additional units or commercial, we're not sure yet.
I guess what I'm trying to drive at is if there's a whole lot of bedrock on the eastern portion of this larger site and that increases the development cost substantially, does that eat up a, a portion of the increment to where, at what point?
So, so mayor and council, all that's available, if I can get this word. So this is what's available based on the numbers we have today, the four point two million. Anything else beyond that's on the developer? So that would pay for, it's not only the, um, garbage and bedrock they have to remove, but they're also building new, paying for New Scott Street and paying for, I think it's Levy Drive, is part of their, um, contribution to the project. And also paying for a new Spock waterline relocation of all the utilities and a bunch of other things. So that is a pretty big number. Will it be that much? We don't know yet until they actually get their final bids back. But we still don't have a final design, so we've set that. They're aware of this number, they got this report just like you. So they know where their cap is. It's similar to the downtown project, there's only so much increment. If they spend over that, which they already are, it's coming out of their pocket.
So the goal here for the developer would be to find out where the bedrock is the highest and try to lay out your plan on that site to minimize...
The amount of blasting, correct.
Well, and the other question is the, is the dump part extend to the east, to the other parcels?
Right.
And so, but we're looking at the expanded, uh, available dollars there for, uh, for the cam, contamination costs on the dollar slide from two point...
So mayor, mayor and council, remember this agreement is similar to the downtown agreement. So it's public infrastructure.
Yep.
So basically, three new streets, 'cause I think we also, also planning doing part of Atwood Street now. So the only street they're not really touching is the Scott County Highway. A relocation of all utilities, there's, if you remember, there was a Spock requirement for a couple hundred thousand dollars to loop a waterline over to RAR. And then we did do, when we did the soil testing, so the dump is basically here. We did, um, core into the POSP property, which the city acquired. And there, it was bedrock, um, just below the surface there. Based on just looking at the houses that are here, they don't have very big basements, so we're assuming the bedrock's here. We've been in this house in the corner, we've tested in Doggy Doo, it's a foot below their slab, it's solid bedrock. So the bedrock looks to kind of lie in this area and the dump's kind of in this back area. So we're gonna assume when we do the road and some of the utility work, we're gonna hit a lot of garbage and that's kind of built into that price. 'Cause we will remove that or do whatever the engineers propose from a structural standpoint to make sure our utilities are protected.
I have the, the overall value now, as it stands, is close to, or twenty-nine million? Over twenty-nine million in, in market value?
Yeah, correct, we anticipate that the proposed, uh, post-development value to be, uh, approximately twenty-nine million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. That was the estimate on which these TIF plans were based off of. It is an estimate at this point in time.
Okay. Questions, uh, do you have more to present?
Uh, no, uh, that's it, uh, for me. I'll pull up the next step slides and then, yeah, if you have any questions. So, uh, would be proposed for action tonight would be adoption of the resolution approving the modification of the TIF district.
More questions of our financial analysts or our staff?
So mayor and council, similar to the last one, we'll be back at some point in the future once we get the final plans and utility relocations for adoption of a resolution approving the modification of the actual development agreement.
You're requesting action tonight, though?
Mayor, that's correct. All we're really doing tonight is changing the numbers and set, and including those three houses in the district.
Stay on the map.
Yep, so that they can move forward and spend all the money they need to spend to move the project forward.
More questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anybody else would like to come forward, make comment in regard to this modification to TIF District nineteen, Riverfront Bluff? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Whiting?
Seeing nobody getting up, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number R two zero one nine dash zero five nine to modify the current Riverfront TIF District number nineteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, it's my understanding we're gonna see greater detail in the developers' agreement at a later date?
Right.
Okay.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number eight. We will now recess for the EDA Authority Meeting. Mr. President?
Need a motion for that?
Counselor Lehman?
Motion to recess to EDA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, Mr. President?
We'll call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting for May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Please make note of the rule. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's been adopted. Uh, item number three, we have the consent business. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the EDA minutes for me, seventh, two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Lehman. Any discussion, 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 all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent business has been passed. We move on to item four A. General business modification to TIF District nineteen for the River Bluff TIF District.
Mr. President and board members, so this is the, similar to the action you took, just approving the boundary change in the budget.
This is the item we just discussed, is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number E twenty nineteen dash zero zero, zero zero seven, expanding the Riverfront TIF... Number 19. Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Discussion, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item 4B, the sale of property at 331 First Avenue West to Gawn Companies.
Mr. President and Board members, thanks to Mr. Lilahog, it's 313 in my...
Okay, let's make note of that change. It's 313 First Avenue West.
So the resolution is correct because it has a legal description.
Okay.
Public notice was correct.
This is an item we've discussed before in the past. What's the, Mr. Lehman?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm just a little bit confused here. We're approving a sale of a property that we already included into an expanded TIF district? Is that what we're doing?
Mr. President and Board members, so we've done this for all the other properties. If you remember, the agreement is they're going to purchase two of the properties. We actually purchased yesterday one. This is just setting up so when you approve the Contract for Private Development Amendment, this property would have been through the process so we can transfer it to them whenever they start construction. So we were required by statute to do a public notice and have this approved. So that's where we're at tonight.
Property that the EDA bought that we're now selling to Gawn?
Correct.
Mr. Lehman, you had a...
Which property did we buy yesterday?
It's the kind of grayish white house next to Doggy Doo's. It's on a pretty large lot. It's got a carriage house kind of in the back, barn.
Part of this TIF district?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's not the address that's in front of us?
It's 313, not 331.
And that's the one we bought yesterday?
313, correct, sir.
Okay.
And that's what the resolution shows.
Any further questions, staff? Mr. Mars?
I'll offer Resolution E2019-008 to sell the property at 313 First Avenue West to Gawn Companies or its affiliates.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item five, adjourned to June 4th, 2019.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? We have a second.
Amendment to June 4th?
Go ahead. June 4th, I said 14, yeah.
It said 4th, didn't it?
Yes, it says 4th. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We can reconvene the City Council.
Well, reconvene the City Council, Shakopee City Council meeting for May 21st, 2019. And we are up to, actually, 10B3, which was moved up. So inclusive splash pad project, Lions Park. Jay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. This evening, we have an opportunity for you to consider before us. For many years, Shakopee citizens have been asking for a splash pad in our city. And we have an opportunity to consider one here. We have the master plan in development right now, and the draft plans for Lions Park have a splash pad in them. I had an opportunity last week to go to Landscape Structures, which is the folks who helped build the Fund for All Playground that we enjoy there in Delano. And when I went there, got to meet with staff, got to meet their leadership, and got to see some pretty incredible stuff there. What I wasn't expecting to see there was Mr. Greg Stokes. Because while this opportunity is before us, I understand he's a son of Shakopee and he wants to help his hometown, I didn't realize that he is the man establishing the standards in splash pads. He is their managing director for the Water Division for Landscape Structures. And so as we talked about what's happening in the industry, and I learned from their president, as he was briefing me about all the projects they're doing around the United States, Greg is the point person on those projects when it comes to splash pads. The reason I say that is because when it came up to me, I thought it was really cool to have a son of Shakopee who had this invention that was going to transform the industry, this hydraulic activator. And I thought it was a great opportunity for us to partner. What I wasn't thinking about until last week is if we were to wait on this opportunity, we'll be talking to Greg Stokes again. The difference is, we'll be paying a lot of money for it. So this opportunity that's before us, I'm going to invite, you'll see this evening, we have a pride of Lions and Lionesses here to support this. And I want to invite them to come up and talk about a potential partnership with Mr. Stokes and the Lions and the City of Shakopee to benefit the citizens of Shakopee.
Good evening and welcome. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tracy Pink.
Scott Trozen, current president of Lions, 236 Lewis Street South, Shakopee, Minnesota.
I'm Greg Stokes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members. My name is Tracy Pink, and I am the acting chairman for the Lions Group for our park up at Lions Park. I'm here to present to you what we have as a unique opportunity that's been presented to us. About a couple months ago, we had a gentleman by the name of Greg Stokes who came and contacted us. Now Greg's father actually was a member of the Lions Group in our past, and he thought of multiple ways that he might be able to come and help us out. And one of those is in an inclusive playground. What we're talking about here is a water feature that is in our park system, and that's what we're here to look at tonight as far as the park goes. So what we're talking about tonight is actually a partnership. And this is a three-way partnership that we're presenting to you tonight. Partnership between Landscape Structures, also known as Aquatics, is the division that Greg leads within the Shakopee Lions, and then also for the City of Shakopee and the Parks and Rec. What we're presenting tonight to you is, if you remember, a couple years ago, we had an amazing project that we brought to Lions Park in our Fund for All All-Inclusive Playground. What an incredible opportunity we had then to be able to do something amazing for kids in our community. Not just every kid, but those kids also that are really challenged in many ways, when we talk about physical or possible mental challenges. We did an amazing thing. We all united together and brought forward one of the best all-inclusive playground parks in the entire Scott County, as well as the metro area. What we're bringing to you tonight is, in addition to that, we have an opportunity that's been presented by Landscape Structures, where they're willing to be able to donate to us a lot of free materials that we would like to partner with the Lions in order to present another feature to that park, also in conjunction with the actual playground itself. Okay? So if you take a look at the monitors in front of you, you're going to see what we're talking about. So we've got our all-inclusive park that's already built, that is the Fund for All Park that we built two years ago. And the picture on the right side is showing what we're looking at as far as the all-inclusive splash pad to go with the all-inclusive playground itself. Okay? Our projection that we're looking at here as far as proposal, I am going to show you an aerial view. If you take a look at the bottom right corner, you're going to see that there's an existing box. That's where our current all-inclusive playground, the Fund for All Playground, is currently located. What we're presenting to you is putting in the actual all-inclusive splash pad that would be literally adjacent across a walkway that would have free access to anybody, again, that is a child, young adults, adults that need to be with their children. And not only that, but would be right next to restrooms, and we'd also have a canopy area. So if you take a look at the left side or somewhere in the middle there, the blue box will highlight to us where the existing proposal is that we'd like to put in the splash pad. And then the orange box that's sitting next to that would also be a canopy system with some benches and stuff for those days where it might be warm and hot out for the kids and their parents. Okay? So that's what a proposal is today. When we talk about the partnership, here's the partnership that we're looking at. I'm going to turn it over, actually, right now to Greg Stokes, so he can talk on behalf of Landscape Structures and Aquatics. Greg?
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so what we have is a new product that we're wanting to bring to market, and we're trying to have that brought to market by next year. And it's a non-electrical water activation device. And what we're willing to do is supply all the splash pad equipment and ground sprays and this hydraulic activator. It has roughly about a $50,000 value. And bring that to the City of Shakopee. And we're going to offer a three-year warranty on all the pieces and parts of it. I have currently three staff that live in Shakopee, so it's going to get a lot of attention from us. And, yeah, so that's what you see up there. It's a very nice, small kind of splash pad. It's meant to be kind of a pocket park splash pad, very modest, and it's very complimentary to the playground that you have. It's a great fit for it, so.
Thanks, Greg. So that's the partnership that we're looking at with Aquatics and Landscape Structures. What the Lions is willing to partner up with is to really cover the extra expenses and costs that would need to go in order to build the actual water feature itself. So as you look at the screen, you're going to see what we've put into our projection and what it would cost in materials and labor, which we would cover all of ourselves, in order to actually build the facility as designed. So we'd have all the equipment donated, we would cover the installation. We've worked very diligently with a lot of our members internally that know those grounds well. We've installed the irrigation systems, everything. We've been working with Jay Tobin, and he's also been working with members within the city to make sure that we can make this a reality and be able to bring it to you tonight and have everything covered. So as you take a look at all the things that we're talking about as far as the labor and construction, it has to do with the earthwork itself. We've got our water supply, how we complete our outflow of drainage, also the forming materials, so the concrete padding itself. We've got the rebar, the concrete plumbing, and then just miscellaneous expenses in order to be able to accommodate and accomplish this. In total, we're looking at about $18,000 just to build the actual pad itself with an additional floor that we're identifying as possibly for the canopy structure, as well as for the benching systems. Okay? So that's what we're looking at in total. Okay? The other thing that we're also willing to do as a Lions Group is to cover all the maintenance. So there's going to be things that are going to have to be done at the beginning of the season, to turn on the system, turn on the water. Also, at the end of the service, in order to blow out the plumbing systems and make sure that there's no freezing issues in order to keep the system up and running well. Also, to winterize the products, ground sprays, drain covers. And then finally, is the concept of, we may be dealing with some debris, because obviously, Lions Park is beautiful. We've got trees, working within ourselves, as well as partnering up the city. If we have mowers and stuff out there, how can we make sure we keep it clean and keep debris free? So that's what the Lions is willing to go ahead and donate within this partnership. Okay? Now what we're asking for, from you, as we said, this is a three-pronged partnership we're looking for, is to allow us to ask you to be able to provide the funds for the money as far as water goes. Okay? What we're projecting right now, and this is numbers that Greg and his team has put together on a projected amount, is we're looking at roughly 9,700 gallons per day, possibly during its peak. What that equates to over 90 days, which would kind of be our summertime days that we'd be looking at, would be about 874,000 gallons. What that equates to yearly is roughly about $1,000 to $1,500 in partnership from you to those of us that are also willing to partner on this project. Okay? So that's where the three-pronged project partnership is that we're talking about. Okay? For us, we want to give you a chance to kind of see what we're talking about on what the features will be. So the pictures that you see on here are going to be just different elevations, to give you an idea of what we're looking at from different angles. As we have seen here, it's very open, it's very clean. We've got multiple features, as you can see, from, as we love, a giant lion on it. Funny that it's in Lions Park and they're partnering with us. But there's multiple, there's about 10 sprayheads that are part of this. We have a palm tree. And again, it's very open and inviting, and allows not just the kids, but their parents and those that might be assisting them also to be involved in the actual playground feature itself. So again, just showing you multiple versions of what we're looking at as far as the play structures go. Okay? So what we're here tonight to do is to make a request to City Council for two things. Number one is to support us with the possibility of helping us with approving the actual build, because there is a time sensitivity to this. As Greg said, this is an actual item that is a prototype. They're looking to partner with the city in order to get this done and get it done actually fairly quickly. So there is a time element to this. And if we miss this opportunity, Landscape Structures is going to have to find another city to partner up with that's willing to work with them. To us, we look at this as being an opportunity we can't miss. We have an incredible inclusive playground we built two years ago. What an amazing thing for those kids to come and not just be able to play at a playground, but walk right across the sidewalk and be able to play at an amazing water feature that's also there with them. Guys, this is something that not every city has, and we can be very proud if we're able to move this forward. So that's one thing that we're asking for, is just support to make us able to move forward on the construction. Okay? The second thing we're also asking is your support on the funds in order to cover the water supply. Those are our two simple asks this evening, and that's our presentation. So thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much. The Lions have been a strong partner, community, for many, many years and decades, so thank you for that. I have a question about the surface. We have a kind of a soft surface over at the inclusive playground. What would this surface be like?
It's actually kind of funny you ask that, because Lion Trozen, sorry, we get used to calling each other Lion in our group, Lion Trozen and myself, we're just talking about that, actually, tonight. So we've got multiple options that we can look at. We've got a lot of partnerships with a lot of our members on anything from a skidded surface so that it's safe and it's non-slip resistant, to, there might be other options that we can look at. One thing that was being discussed was the possibility of some sort of sponging that we could do on the top of the surface. So we don't know what that final grade is going to look like as far as that is, but we're going to make sure whatever is the final surface will be safe and will be skid-resistant so the kids are safe not having to slip around. Okay?
My second question is in regard to the water. It appears like the water usage or cost is not a great deal, but it's, we wouldn't be reusing the water, right? Just a one-time use, and then it would drain? And I see that you mentioned it would go to a retention pond to the south?
Yeah, it's a single-pass domestic system. So we're using domestic water, and that will be put out for display and play. It will be captured and then routed to some type of either storm or to catch basin.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we've also discussed how could we reuse that in other ways? So potentially, using that water as the source for irrigation in the park is one alternative. Another would be another retention pond or the existing retention pond, or potentially even rerouting that and being able to use that to supplement the water supply at Sand Venture. So there would be a desire to try and find a way to capture and reuse that water. At the very least, it would go into a retention pond would probably be the...
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've got two questions. The metered time settings, are they factory decided, or is it something that can be changed and altered later on?
That's simply a computerized system that we can set up that allows the flow of water to come to that system. So we can set that up any way that we want, as far as what days, what time. That's purely open for discussion on how we set those hours. We'll work with Jay, obviously, to determine what those hours would be at the park itself.
Okay, and then the second question, is there any chlorination done in the unit to the water that's being sprayed out?
There is no chlorination. This is actually straight from the water supply, so it's potable water. And I know one of the concerns even we brought up about anything we're talking about splash pad is about immunities with some of these kids that may have some challenges physically. And one of the best things we can do is actually have it being fresh water actually coming out through the park. So there's no chlorination, it's straight potable water that comes through the irrigation lines.
And I recognize there's pros and cons both ways. If it's potable water, you know, you're playing in it, you're drinking it, that's great. But on the other side, you've got the, you've got to worry about kids in diapers and everything else, too, so.
Other questions of the Lions, the owner? Other questions of the Lions, the owner? Counsel Brennan?
I do, um, I, I, could you explain the activator system? How does it turn on and does it turn on all the sprayers at the same time and it shuts off at, how long does it stay on and at what point does it shut off?
There's a, a button that you press down that will activate the system, and it will, um, deliver si- sixty gallons per minute, which will feed all of those, um, jets that you see. And you can set the duration of time for that activator in from thirty seconds to two minutes.
Other follow-up question? Counsel Brennan?
Uh, I'm not on that. Did you have one on that?
I did. Yeah, you sure.
Counsel Lehman?
So, not understanding how this works. So it's all up and running, it's during the open hours of whatever's decided. It's not just spraying, but when nobody's there, you actually have to go up and push a button and it activates it, so if you went to the lion and pushed him and he did his thing and then walked over to something else and pushed that, is there more than one button?
No, there's one button, it'll activate the whole spray park.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you can just go play with all the stuff?
You can play with all of it.
After the time expires, you'd have to go over and push the button again.
That's correct.
So if there's nobody there, there's no water usage?
That's right. And one other thing about, as far as water quality, safety, a domestic splash pad is one of the, is the safest form of a splash pad because you're using, you know, potable water. So, um, recirculation saves on water, and typically splash pads that have large volumes of water you wanna capture and recirculate, but then you have the additional responsibility to make sure that that water is like a swimming pool and treated, so.
Counsel Whitey, do you have a question?
No, no question.
Yeah, more?
Could, um, I'm not sure who to ask, maybe Jay. What, what makes this a inclusive playground versus an ADA accessible playground? Or a play area, waters, water area?
Hundred percent access- accessible, so, um, anybody with any physical conditions can get to any one of the objects to play with.
Okay.
Zero entry, obviously, just like...
There's no standing water, correct, so.
No chair?
Wheelchairs can play with any one of those objects, can participate with any one of those water events, just like anybody else.
So what would make an ADA accessible?
Well, it will be wheelchair access, so you can roll right out into it.
Okay.
There's no barriers, limitations whatsoever for a wheelchair to access anything on that splash pad.
Are all of our, I'm sorry, maybe Jay can help me with this one, are all of our parks and equipment ADA accessible or inclusive?
We have ADA standards that we have to meet. Uh, as far as inclusive, uh, one of the things I wanna say about Landscape Structures that I learned when I toured last week is, is inclusive is becoming a new standard. We, we've done something that's very special, but that's being a consideration in the development of all of their playgrounds with Landscape Structures. And so what they're designing at Landscape Structures is intended to meet a myriad of needs that go beyond just ADA accessibility. Uh, and, and inclusive has a broad range of definitions depending on where you go to get your source. Uh, the intention is to make it as accessible to every person in Shakopee as possible.
Counsel Lehman?
Well, I, I think what she's getting at is there, there is a difference between the inclusive, specifically inclusive and ADA. The specifically inclusive, in one person's case, would be where you can, you're hypothetically, you're blind, you go in and, and you can feel things, and they have, you know, it's might be textured one way for one thing and textured a different way for another thing. Um, so they're kind of geared toward them type of disabilities where ADA is, is an access issue, access to the actual function.
And one note on that, the city did realign the path that runs up to the bathroom, I think it was last summer, where they, they put an S-curve in it so that that path would be actually meeting ADA requirements. So the bathroom that's there and the, the travel of path going up that is actually accessible, ADA compliant. And when we get into the splash pad, we're not gonna be over a two or three percent to make a drain, and when you look at the ADA requirements, it's, it's so many feet at five percent and you have to have a landing. The requirements on the ADA stuff, I think that our engineer could talk a little bit more about that, but this will be a flat pad in essence, and there is accessibility via that path.
I have a question for Greg. So you're the inventor and you have a patent pending. We'd be considered an early adapter?
What's that?
We'd be considered an early adapter if this were to go through?
You would be.
You're offering a three-year warranty, uh, um, is it in, the product in testing or has done any testing or?
We're in our, closing our second year full development. We've brought this in and cycled count, um, its push button and its activation over three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand times without failure, so.
Counsel, uh, Whitey?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, uh, been able, I'm also part of the Lions, uh, Park Committee with the Lions, and, uh, so after a lot of discussion, I actually was here for the Park Board meeting on this discussion. Um, part of the, the request is that, uh, when the Lions come in to help install this, Mr. Stokes wants to be able to take pictures and video to use for installation purposes and, uh, to market his product, uh, and also after the installation too. So I think it's a, a win-win for everybody. Um, but if you've, uh, the Park Board unanimously accepted this proposal. The Lions had a lot of questions. Those meetings don't always go as smooth as, uh, things, but, uh, uh, we got through all of them and the Lions, uh, were greatly willing to, to partner with, uh, Mr. Stokes and hopefully the city, so.
Counsel Lehman?
Mr. Ma- Mr. Mayor, question for, and I don't know who this is directed to, well, first I'll make a comment, thanks for your potential donation, it's greatly appreciated by the community. But if we have a, a product that's not, um, what's it going through? It's going through its, uh, patenting? What happens if it's denied the patent? Is there any li- liability placed on the city for utilizing something like this?
No, it just would mean that competitors could take our technology and reproduce it for themselves.
Okay. And then from our standpoint, um, Mr. Tobin, is this a play-at-your-own-risk type thing or?
Say that one more time.
Is this a play-at-your-own-risk type thing and we're gonna, we're gonna expect the parents to monitor their children?
It's just like most splash pads, uh, a- around the area, that they're accessible to folks, parents supervise them. We would post some sort of rules, uh, and expect that folks would comply with the rules that are posted.
Okay.
All right, Counsel Brennan?
Would the Lions be, um, amenable to having the inclusive removed from this resolution in this, this vote? Would, would you still be willing to donate if it didn't have the inclusive, uh, on it?
I don't think it matters. We're here for the kids, and that's what we see this as an opportunity for. Um, I guess my question is, why would we remove that? Isn't that the whole purpose, is we want everybody to be welcome?
Well, I, I, can I answer that? I believe a- all playgrounds should be ADA accessible and inclusive. Um, and when you're, just by saying it is, is setting it apart from anything else. Um, I have a child with Down Syndrome. I, I think that it's very important that they be treated like anybody else, they shouldn't just be, oh, they shouldn't go to this place because it's inclusive. Um, so I, I believe that, that it should be treated and, and labeled a playground or a water park.
I don't think any of the Lions will have a problem with that. Our whole concept is we're trying to do something amazing for all, and my mindset on that is, we didn't name the other park that we built a couple of years ago in partnership, all-inclusive, we called it Fun for All.
Mm-hmm.
We can call this our Fun for All Splash Pad.
Yeah.
If that makes it more feasible.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yeah, the, the term inclusive is, is, is trying to set it apart from just mere ADA accessibility issues. The whole, the whole definition and the whole reason to call it inclusive is so people understand that this is a place where they can bring their kids, where they have that access. Uh, there are a lot of parks that, that are ADA, ADA accessible that aren't accessible to every kid, and they can't do everything that everybody else can. The term inclusive is recognizing that, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, but I think it's important that we market it as an all-inclusive playground or an all, excuse me, an all-inclusive splash pad, because then that's specifically inviting everyone to be able to come in and, and use that. Uh, but, you know, I don't think it really matters what we name it, but, you know, we will market it as an all-inclusive, all-welcoming, uh, splash pad.
Counsel Lehman?
Yeah, I see it both ways. I see it as if, 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 uh, somebody that was blind went up, pushed a button, they're gonna be able to feel the water spring down upon them, so, so they're...
Sensory.
Right, so they're getting that sensory value. Um, and they can actually, when it stops, they can actually do it again if they wanna do. So I, I think there is an, uh, some inclusion portion to the product. Um, but I, I respectfully understand where Counsel Brennan's coming from too, but I, I think water features are unique, unique to the, to the inclusive portion of it, because, uh, you know, our inclusive park where you have these certain items that are set up certain ways for that sensory stimulation, uh, they don't have the water feature, so they have other types of, uh, stimulation. So I, I think this is, I, I, I think it actually meets the definition from that standpoint. Um, so I'm, I'm actually good with the way it is.
Other questions of Lions or other staff? Mr. Stokes? If not, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you for your consideration.
Yeah. Counselors? Counsel Whitey?
I'd make a motion to approve the inclusive splash pad project with Lions Park.
I would second it.
I have a motion to second?
I would like to make an amendment to remove the inclusive designation on that.
I don't have an issue with that. I don't have an issue with that.
I can second that too.
So that slight amendment would be approved?
Jay made the motion.
Yeah, we, we accepted it, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, it, it may not be part of this motion, but we should recognize that the donation received from both the Lions and Landscape Structures is a donation to the city, that we should probably, uh, make a motion to accept that donation, whether it's, you know, a value of either in-kind or ac- actual products as well too. We don't necessarily have that in the memo, but it wouldn't hurt to, to recognize that as well too if you have a motion, so. You can do that as a second motion, but...
What is this motion then to?
We'll run this one if you wanna run a second motion.
Go ahead, we'll do this one first and do a second one.
All right, um, further discussion? I think this would be a awesome compliment to Lions Park. I think it'd be an awesome compliment to our all-inclusive playground. They're confused unbelievably by all sorts of folks. Um, and I think that playground has actually won an award. Um, that zero barrier, kind of real important, a little different than playgrounds twenty years ago. Um, so I think this would be the perfect compliment. Counsel, uh, Whitey?
No, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think anytime, of course, the Lions have been adding features to Lions Park for many years, uh, doing the work on things. They were instrumental in the inclusive playground, uh, worked on the shelters down there and, and many, many different projects, and will continue to. Um, I'm not hung up on the name about it, you know, I'd like to see possibly Mr. Tobin go back to the Parks Board and talk about maybe the, the Lion Dick Stokes Memorial, uh, Splash Pad. I think that's a better name, but, uh, um, for right now, I think this is a great project. Um, and it's just gonna bring more, more people and, and have more fun at Lions Park.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion accepting donations from Aquatex, is that pronounced correctly, and the Shakopee Lions, uh, for the aquatic splash pad in Lions Park as proposed here tonight, with the information presented.
I will second that.
Do we need more, uh, firm numbers, Dern?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, I don't know that you necessarily need to, you have it in the council memo, we can attach that as, as, as well there too, so. It talks about the Lions having twenty thousand dollars in materials, and I don't see an exact number, so, uh, for the, for the equipment piece of it.
It's eighteen to be exact, and they, they mentioned a couple of grand for a canopy.
But is it maybe just motion that was ever mentioned in the memo or whatever?
And then you have the value of the play structures themselves that it costs fifty grand, um, rough, roughly, if that's correct?
Okay, motion on the table. The second by Counsel Cadre. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
I have one more.
Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like to, um, have, have a direction to, to, uh, Mr. Tobin to bring back to us what the plan is for the capturing of the water and how the reuse, reuse of the water, what that plan might be.
What the final use of the water strategy is?
Yep.
Second one.
All right. Moving ahead then, 10B1, recreational specialist. Jay, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm, I'm excited tonight to talk with you about this because some fantastic things have been happening in our community, I think you're aware of them. In fact, I... I wanted to give you the latest catalog of, of everything that's happening with our seniors. One of the things that I want you to note as you're looking at those activities is that many of those activities, uh, say free, reasons those activities are being able to be provided to our citizens for free is because amazing partnerships have been developed, partnerships with a lot of different stakeholders in our senior community. Some are senior living facilities, some are staff members. Today, they just had a, a luncheon learn where the chief of police sat down and talked about what's happening in our community in terms of policing. Uh, these sorts of things are happening every day. Uh, the senior center is the epicenter of what's happening in the Shakopee senior community. And the axis that makes all of those things turn is this position. And it's not just the position, there's also a personality attached to it. Carla Crest has done some amazing things in the three years that she's been here, and I, I want to give her the opportunity to continue to do amazing things, 'cause what she's done with thirty hours has taken what, three years ago was happening for the numbers, and you had those numbers before? She's quadrupled many of those numbers in terms of participation without seeing an increase in the budget, because she's done this fantastic job of building partnerships and getting others to invest in the seniors in our community, and getting the seniors in our community to invest of their time and energy. And so if you come at any time between 5:00 AM, the time we open it up, and about 2:00 in the afternoon, there's a lot of activities going on. I, I was sharing with you earlier a great picture of a llama kissing me this afternoon, uh, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause we had a, a great activity in terms of a mine cafe, uh, trying to talk about the issue of dementia and stuff like that. These sorts of things are helping not just our seniors, but those who love and care for our seniors, understand how we live in community better, and Carla's helping facilitate that. I, I don't wanna be the only one that tells you about it first, uh, we, we have some great partnerships, one of them that, that has been tremendously beneficial, a barrier to access to senior programs is transportation. And I have striven to find a solution to that, because it costs us between three hundred to five hundred dollars per activity when we do it. We looked at trying to partner, uh, with the MVTA to get a grant to buy a bus, uh, that was kind of cost prohibitive for us. Carla found an amazing solution in partnering with All Saints. And All Saints now is allowing us to use their bus. They get advertising as we're taking our seniors to activities, and we get the use of their bus for free, so that our seniors can go and explore the world around them together in community. Uh, the contact person from All Saints couldn't be here tonight, but she did write a letter that she asked be read, and so I just wanna ask Sheri to come up and, and share that with you. And the reason I'm doing this is because it takes a tribe in this community, we are partnering together in order to take care of each other, and she's done an amazing job of building a network of relationships so that folks feel like they're part of a community. And as you're transitioning into your senior years, that's a hard thing to do. Some folks feel like they're separated and they're apart, and they don't have activities. And there's not just activities, there's relationships, and they're learning, and they're going, and they're exploring. So Sheri, please read that there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here to read a letter from Lori Gervell, uh, the Director of Marketing from All Saints Senior Living, to Shakopee City Council. I would love to be here in person to express my huge gratitude about Carla Crest at the Community Center, but in lieu of that, here are my thoughts. Over the past two years since I have been at All Saints, Carla, as the Recreation Coordinator, has been instrumental in helping grow the education and the amazing programs for seniors in our community. The Recreation Coordinator has been a leader in collaborating with not only All Saints, but other community partners to help fill the gaps of education and support for our seniors. I did not realize until recently that the position was part-time. The Recreation Coordinator continues to demonstrate the value she brings, to me, seems limited by only being part-time. There is so much more to be done to keep this level of senior recreational and educational program going, and the rising populations of seniors in Shakopee will only create more needs to fill. I highly recommend this pitch, position be made a full-time position. The Recreation Coordinator is a huge asset to the city of Shakopee and the ability to do more with expanded job out, job hours. We are excited about the things that we can partner with her in the future. Please let me know if... partner with her in the future. Please let me know if I can provide any more insight and information. Thank you for your time, Lori Gervell.
We had a similar response from a lot of our other partners. BHS wanted to be here this evening. Kaye is the point person there, and she couldn't. But I just wanted to share that. Those partnerships are really the means by which we've been able to do some fantastic things. And I wanted, with your permission, to... A couple of folks have asked if they could share their stories. We have one citizen that is new to the community, and as we're looking at expanding our senior housing capacity in the community, how that transition into the city of Shakopee occurs, I think, is something for us to be aware of and consider. And so I just want to invite you to come forward.
Good evening and welcome.
Darren?
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Patricia Lewis.
Give her the mic. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Lewis, and I live at, do you need my address? 799 Cobblestone Way in Shakopee. And I'm on the Senior Advisory Board for the Active Older Adults Program at the Shakopee Community Center. We would like to lend our support to increase the Recreation Coordinator position with the Shakopee Community Center to full-time. I recently sent each member on the council an email recounting my experience when I retired and moved to Shakopee in 2017 to be near my son and his family. As our population ages, there will be more and more seniors in similar situations moving into our community. I can't begin to tell you how important it was for me to find a program at the Community Center that not only welcomed me, but provided valuable resources on successful aging, community history, local resources, connections with local providers, and senior fitness. And of course, the social aspect of this program is priceless for people who need to rediscover themselves after retiring. There are programs for the very active, for the moderately active, and for those who prefer just the social benefits of the program. During any given day, you can find members of the Active Older Adults Program in the senior lounge playing cards, mahjong, bingo, Mexican train dominoes, or simply enjoying potluck inspirited conversation. I would not have been able to become as active in the community without the resources and contacts that I learned about through the wide variety of programs offered by the center. Currently, the ages of the seniors in the Active Older Adults Program range from 55 to over 90 years of age. Just imagine trying to provide programming for participants that span almost 40 years of age with all levels of physical abilities. Right now, there could be a more concentrated focus on the younger, older adults, if only there was more time. This age group is requesting additional activities, but with the current restriction on the number of hours for this position, it's impossible to provide that service without cutting back somewhere else. In my volunteer position on the Senior Advisory Board, I'm aware of the economics that have been put in place in the last several months. The Community Center has partnered with local companies, as Jay just told you, to obtain vans and buses for our senior trips at a much lower cost. This not only helps the Community Center, but it also provides relief for members with limited incomes and allows more of our members to go on senior trips and outings that keep them active and engaged, a very necessary component to successful aging. I could go on and on, but I think you've received a lot of feedback about how important this position is to the seniors in our community. We are concerned that the current budget of 30 hours per week is just not enough to continue to enhance and add to the activities that are so vital to the success of the Active Adults Program. I hope you will take these comments under consideration when weighing the benefits of making this position full-time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I did... I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that not only has she creatively saved us money, but she's also generated some revenue creatively. So a lot of folks have asked for trips and tours, and it takes a lot of time and energy to plan. And so she partnered with Landmark Tours, and they have created tour opportunities for our Active Older Adults. And every time one of our Active Older Adults takes one of those trips, someone signed up to go to New York, we get a percentage of that sale. So we received our first dividend check for a Landmark Tour about two weeks ago. And so it's expanding our capacity through creative partnerships, and those partnerships take stewardship and intentionality to maintain. And we have other partners that are coming into the community. Most recently, BHS will be baking down soon. That's a partnership that we'd like to explore more, and we need more time to do it. So if there's any other questions, there's other folks that are here in support of this. I leave that to your discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
As council is well aware, this request has come to me multiple times over the last two and a half years. And whether it was from Mr. Burkett or Mr. Tobin, based upon the guidance and direction I received from city council over the years, it was very important for me to find some kind of a way to pay for it if it was to move forward. And so it did not come before you because it did not get past me. Both Mr. Burkett, Mr. Tobin, and I were trying to find some way to be able to justify this. And it's not because of, you know, Carla's value. It far exceeds, you know, the minimal amount of money that we're asking for to move this forward. But it was the realization that in order to properly fund this, we had to have a revenue stream. There had to be something that we could use. And then it became very clear, as we were looking at the numbers, our ice arena is exceptionally, exceptionally successful. It is the premier facility in the state and is known as that. And through your stewardship and your look at monthly what we do in regards to the revenue and expenses that we're moving forward with the ice arena, it became clear that we actually have a revenue stream at this point. Your actions on removing the turf and us being able to sell that and then to use that ice then as ice for full-time is going to have a significant impact even more on what we're going to be able to bring forward in regards to revenues. So we now have that revenue stream, and it is because of that that this position now is before you. I believe fully in the position, and now that we have a way to pay for it, it has my full support. I can tell you that in all... Mr. Tobin has asked three times. Mr. Burkett asked twice for this position. So this is not something that comes to you lightly.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Are there any charges to be involved in these senior programs by the seniors?
Currently, the seniors do pay. They pay for. It's typically a pass-through. So if you look at the catalog, you'd see on there the fees. The free ones are the ones that are sponsored, but the ones that we actually incur expenses for typically go through as a pass-through.
And for the free ones that are offered at the Community Center, is there any charge for any of those?
We have not been charging for those so that we get maximum participation. An example would be today's mine cafe. The llamas were there, and whoever wanted to... This was a drop-in activity. Could come through, receive the instruction, and get an opportunity to interact with the llamas.
Was that available to everybody or just the seniors?
It was available to everybody. We actually... I was down there. We had some lifeguard training going on, and Caitlin couldn't find her lifeguards because they were all in there with the llamas.
I guess what I'm driving at is if we have senior-exclusive area and activities that aren't open to the rest of the Community Center users, and we're getting these expenses, we're talking about this growing and growing because seniors are moving in, we might be able to cover this expense with profits of the ice arena, but what do you do in the future? So, you know, at a minimum, and I recognize my mother's an elderly senior on a fixed income, so I recognize not all seniors have a bundle of money to spend. Some may, some don't. And maybe what we should consider, and this is a question for you and Carla, make a little box in the seniors' area for donations, and anything that goes in or goes back into the programming.
I love that you brought that up. We actually had a conversation. Folks were concerned because coffee was being purchased, and that was an expenditure. So we went back and talked to the senior board, and they installed a donation box. And we have actually received more in donations than what our expenses are. We've had a profit of about $25 since the beginning of the year. So those creative solutions are constantly being considered. Another one is to defray the cost of food and stuff. They already said they hold potlucks, so...
They're the best cooks around.
Absolutely. So stewardship is important, not just to us, but I also want to point out that most of these folks are on fixed income. And so in order for them to have access, just getting there can be hard. And coming to a space where they feel reconnected to community or connected for the first time is pretty important. And if we throw a barrier of finances before it, that's why these partnerships have been so critical. That's going to keep some folks who really need this from coming. And as far as exclusion, an example of the llamas today, I don't think anyone's been told you can't come in. If you want to come in and learn from the history lesson on what's going on in Shakopee from Dave Schlepper when he's giving that, I think they would love for other folks to come in and join them. I don't think there's ever been a, nope, you're not old enough to be in here, stay with the little kids. There's no little kids table here. Everybody's invited. It's just the target audience is our seniors in our community.
If you want to learn how to play cards or get beat at checkers, they'll do that, too. And I think that is free of charge. The whoopings are... they're free. Counselor Lehman?
At one point, there was a senior club that had a membership. Is that gone by the wayside?
It has.
Okay. I've participated in some of these activities, and yes, I am over 55. And I have gone to the wine event in the middle of the day and to the winery, and that was pretty fun. So it's a great... It's a great program that we have here in Shakopee. And I think Carla's done a great job. I always see her in the area, and she's been very helpful and very open to conversation.
All right. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we built the Community Center addition, we didn't have a senior center in Shakopee. And some of us joked that the senior center in Shakopee was the McDonald's where the seniors would gather to drink coffee in the morning and things. And I think they still do that. McDonald's hasn't lost any coffee drinkers. But now that we have the senior center, there's a space for our seniors to do so much more than just gather for chatten and coffee. And Carla has done an amazing job up there. And you can say you can build it and they'll come. Well, that's not true in this situation. We built it. We got Carla, and she developed all these different things going on and activities. Our seniors are one of our most important assets in our community. She's done these creative public-private partnerships that have made it well worth it for the seniors and for the budget. So I think it's a great opportunity to expand on that. I'm looking forward to seeing what more she can do.
More questions of staff? If not, thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Well, with that, I will follow it up with a recommendation and make a motion to approve the recreational specialist senior citizens programs at a full-time level.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move ahead then to item 10B2, coordinator for volunteers, sponsorships and advertising.
Need a break?
Mr. Tobin.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, welcome back, Jay. It's been a while.
Too excited.
10B2.
I was just being reminded of what an amazing woman Carla was. That's what I was being told, so...
Be drinking a lot of coffee tomorrow, I'm pretty sure.
I heard that, yeah.
It's going to be a long day, yes, sir. So what's before you is something that I think is going to help the community a lot. A little backstory to this. I've been meeting since I joined staff with the Community Education Director, Bob Greeley, twice a month. And I'm part of the Community Education Advisory Board. And one of the things that came up in one of my first meetings with them back in October was concerns about the status of volunteers in our community. And how do we capture? How do we recruit? How do we train? And how do we retain volunteers? Because there's so many demands in our community. We have so many talented citizens, and we have so many opportunities. How do we marry them up, opportunity with experience, in order to do this? And what I learned is that we didn't have a formal volunteer program within Parks and Recreation, but we have a lot of opportunities. We do have Adopt a Park, and we do have the pop-up gardens that are both being very successful. But I'm talking about specific individuals for specific tasks at a specific time. And so volunteers was on my mind. Bob came up with this idea of do good as the theme for how we get volunteers activated in the community. Well, when I look at that need, I'm also aware of a budget constraints, and how do we do that? Coinciding with that, I'm looking across what was happening at the ice arena. And I'm also exploring all of our other open spaces. And what I saw here was a lot of missed opportunities to generate revenue and promote our local businesses. So when you go to other ball fields, if you're at a baseball game, you see out there in the field, you're thinking, what am I going to do after the game? Oh, I'm going to go eat at that restaurant. I'm going to go have a beer at that pub. I'm going to go do this activity. This is an opportunity to create a position that will expand our current scope of advertising beyond just the dashers that are in the ice arena and take it out into the community in ways that will help promote local businesses, generate revenue for Parks and Recreation, and that revenue can be used to build additional partnerships and sponsorship and manage the volunteer program that we need so desperately. And so that's the proposal, is that we use the offsetting revenues. Currently, it was over 60, about $66,000 is what the company that we were hiring to do advertising for us, that's what they were generating about annually. But we were giving them about 40% of that, and I'm saying that we can have someone do that. Once you get the contract in place, once you put up the advertisement, now what do you do? Well, for us, you build partnerships to sponsor other activities with those same people that you just sold advertising to, and then you use those relationships to get people in the community excited about volunteering. And you use that time to build a system to train, recruit, retain our volunteers in order to benefit the community. As I've looked at other communities that have done this, it's pretty amazing the amount of money that they've been able to save. I think Plymouth had a savings that was the equivalent of 13 and a half FTEs last year because they've been able to leverage so many volunteers within their community. So what I'm asking you to consider is this is an opportunity to save money, activate people in the community, and make money all under one person. And the reason that that would be possible, it's like, how can three people wear three hats and do three jobs? It has everything to do with timing. So the advertising component is seasonal. Once the advertising's up in that particular space, those relationships, you don't talk about it again until that contract comes due again next year. As far as sponsorships, when a sponsorship program's activated, if we're doing it well, we get going early before the season starts, so sponsorships are established. Now we just distribute the dollars and make sure that that advertising for the sponsorships is happening appropriately. The volunteer part, I think, is going to be the challenge to build a system. And I'm not looking for this person to be the sole person. I think every staffer, every department that has needs that would benefit from volunteers, we all need to be recruiting volunteers to meet needs in the community. This is the clearinghouse in which somebody comes and said, here's how you do it. Here's how you get them into the system. Here's how you track their hours. This is the go-to person that we have not had in Parks and Recreation for the city. This is the go-to person that we have not had in Parks and Recreation for the city. So I'm asking you to consider a coordinator for volunteer sponsorship and advertisement sales at a grade 160 to be added to the staff of Parks and Recreation, but that will work in collaboration with all the departments of the city.
Counselor Whiting?
I noticed our contract with Fund to Raise expired last Friday. I assume that hasn't been renewed and we're waiting for this decision tonight.
That's correct, sir.
Is Jay, is the Youth Hockey Association impacted on this?
They are.
Are you aware of this possible change?
I spoke with the Youth Hockey Association president about a month ago about this. Because there has been a revenue sharing for the dasher sales. And the problem with that is we expand the scope of this, managing all those relationships doesn't make sense. And then candidly, when we look at the numbers, when the history on that agreement, when they were selling sales at the previous ice arena, it equated to about $5,000 in sales annually for the city. Their portion of it, they managed it. And then when we took over the sales, it was about the same for a few years. Then when we brought in Fund to Raise, those sales increased dramatically. And for the life of it, it was pretty significant for no effort and it doesn't seem fair to any of the other associations. I think a more fair way to distribute that is to use those revenues to benefit all citizens.
Good way to look at it. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
What's the price to sponsor an event?
There's a proposal. That's something that we have to develop. Because different events are going to have different costs. And there will be opportunities for people to consider what they want to do. So one of the proposals that we had would be like a gold, bronze, silver package. And here's what you get with that package. You'd get this advertising for this event. So we have multiple signature events. We'll allow you to advertise at all the signature events. We'll have you sponsor the T-shirts for our T-ball league, those sorts of things. So the scope of the sponsorship will change once the person gets in here and we dialogue about what would be the best way to build that. The way that sponsorships have been happening is whoever is managing the event, we talked about Carla, is going out there, breaking brush, building relationship. That's not the most effective way for us to manage those sponsorship relationships.
You got everybody out doing all sorts of things for event-specific items, right?
And then you can have one sponsor that gets death by a thousand cuts. Because they don't know that the person from this other department or other division came before them and asked them. As opposed to us approaching them as a city and saying, here's the package that we'd like to offer you. Are you interested? I think that's a more efficient and effective way for us to do it. And I think it's better for our relationships with our partners.
You know, Mayor, I.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm just a little bit standoffish on this and I'll tell you why. Because we had this very long discussion about advertising at the community center in great detail. You know, how far do we go? Do we put Budweiser on the squad cars and Bic lighters on the fire trucks? And you know, how do you manage all this and what's the limits and what's the cost? I don't know. Where's it end? You know, where's the boundaries?
Well, I think, I think to try to bring it in-house to, you know, I know that Fund to Raise, when that agreement first started, there was, it had some appearance of imbalance. And, but the reason that it wasn't taken on by staff is we don't have the time, right? And we can't, can't do it all. And one of the reasons that was on a short contract, I think, was to, so we could review it and see if there's a different opportunity, different model for this. I know bringing it in-house has some direct expense. But if we can have better coordination for all of our park and rec department, there might be some efficiencies and then there might be some, no longer those difficult splits, how I see it.
Well, Mayor, I have key questions upfront before I can support it or not. Are we going to allow outside companies to advertise in this program?
Say that one more time, sir.
Would we allow outside companies to advertise in this program?
What do you consider an outside company, sir?
Company from Eden Prairie.
We already do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Will we allow it outside of Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm opposed to it.
You know, my charge from the city council is to find revenue. And I've said before, if you want to sponsor a paperclip in the city administrator's office, we will work out a deal. And because if I can get, if I can get that, that means that I'm not taking, taking money from taxpayers. I'm actually involved in a consensual transaction. And I'll take that consensual transaction over taking taxpayer dollars any day.
I was about to buck.
Back on Counselor Lehman's question, would this position and the scope of it is, just seems to be for park and rec. Is that correct?
No, it's for the whole city, Mr. Mayor. It will reside in, and currently the duties, the bulk of the volunteer stuff and the bulk of the sponsorship in the near term appears to be in Parks and Recreation. But it is designed to be able to support all of the needs of the city.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we first did the contract with Fund to Raise, I had concerns about giving somebody else money we should be doing in-house. And I understood that we didn't have the time. The portion of this position that does the volunteer coordinating, I think is crucial. I mean, I can see the value of this position just expanding. I'm a little bit concerned that it could be two positions and may well someday be. But I just see there's such a value in both of these. Rather than give another company money to do our marketing and advertisement for our local businesses or whoever wants to sponsor here, I see that we should be doing that ourselves. I understand Counselor Lehman's position about Budweiser on the police cars. There's a limit. I think we, staff should understand that limit and hopefully can control that. And we can always bring that back if there is a concern, I think. But for this, I think it's a great opportunity for the city. We talked about creative public-private partnerships in the last discussion. I think this is important. Especially this is key for this position too.
More questions of staff, comment? Counselors?
I have a quick one. Do you have a person, a person in mind for this? Is this a position that somebody's been working towards or?
Oh, we do not. We would actually advertise open for this. There's a broad range of skills here and I think that it will attract a lot of different types of people. And to work with our staff with the complexity of it, we need the right person. And so I'm excited to see who's motivated by this opportunity.
I have another question. If the volunteer coordinator is finding volunteers for, I don't know, Steve's Public Works Department, would that be charged to Public Works? Or is that, that portion of the salary? Or is it just going to be under the Parks and Recs umbrella?
The volunteer coordinator duties would just be, it would be the clearinghouse. How I envision it is they build the system so that it's pretty user-friendly. So that, using the engineer department as an example, if they have someone that wants to volunteer, they plug it into the system. And it's pretty turnkey, but you have someone in the Parks and Rec department that can answer questions like, how do I log hours? How do I, what's the onboarding process? Are there any other requirements for particular, you know, some volunteer positions have some training requirements. Developing those kind of standards, I think this person's going to help do that. But whoever's going to benefit from the volunteer, I see as kind of plugging it in, if you will. Does that make sense?
Well, I think there's different individual groups that are looking for volunteer opportunities. There's also organizations that put on events, even our own, a big fun day. I know that the JCs are always looking for ways to be involved. The Shakopee Diversity Alliance for their big event is looking for volunteers. Would that be a coordinator then that would try to help aid those organizations in rounding up volunteers?
Because I think that communicates a story. So when those folks come and they say, here's how it's helping the community, I think the big fun day is a great example. So the big fun day, we've got a lot of different partnerships that are happening there. We want to be able to capture that, that we could not have pulled off this amazing event with all these volunteers. And that's the way that we tell the story. Here's the money that was saved for taxpayers to do this fantastic thing. But we also have to be careful not to allow that to get out of control too much. We have to manage the scope of that carefully. And that's where I was saying, this person manages a system. Other people kind of manage, like the JCs, manage their pool of volunteers.
Manage your own people.
Exactly.
I know, I've been contacted by the JCs. I've been contacted by, actually Republic Services, that they would like to come into our community and have a volunteer day or an event that they could latch on to, where their folks could come in and help something on a bigger scale for a day, right?
Yeah, this would be a person that would help facilitate those kind of things. The big thing that I foreseeing in the near term, like one of the first tasks would be to reel the Adopt a Park program back into Parks and Recreation. They've been doing a fantastic job with that in Public Works. But I also think that capturing those hours and getting that as the benchmark for our system is going to be helpful to communicate. Because those folks helped defray the cost of operations for our parks significantly.
Okay, Counselor Whiting?
You know, I think one of the first projects between this position and staff would be to work on those guidelines and what they would work on, what the limits of this position or volunteering would be. I'd also like to see this position, make sure we are celebrating those volunteers. We used to do the volunteer appreciation and I don't, maybe that still goes on. I don't know, but I haven't seen it in a while. I want to make sure that there's value given back and appreciation given back. Because there are so many opportunities in the parks, cleaning parks, the gardening part of it, you know, working for different events, working at the community center, giving tours, you know, down here at City Hall or things like that, anything, just a welcome kind of person, whatever. There could be so many opportunities. So those guidelines, those positions, kind of building that position and what it's going to be, I think would be one of the first tasks.
More or less? If no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors? Counselor Whiting?
We'll make a motion to approve the coordinator of volunteers, sponsorships and advertisement sales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Let me add to that at a grade of 160.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contras. Further discussion? Discussion, I guess my comment is I'd like to see the numbers in it, you know, if this passes in a couple of years, stack that up compared to where we were with Fund to Raise and see how that works, at least on the sponsorship aspect of it, so. Counselor?
I would consider amending my motion to add a report after six months or a year, if you'd like.
I need a year.
Year. I think that'd be appropriate.
Second.
Okay, that's okay with the second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. All right. 10C1, City of Shakopee Fair Housing Policy. Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're here tonight to discuss the possible adoption of a City of Shakopee Fair Housing Policy. So City Council passed Resolution 201837 on April 3rd of 2018, which became, approved Shakopee's participation in the Met Council Livable Communities Program. One of the requirements to that program is you have to adopt a fair housing policy. If you remember, they've given out 1,086 grants so far, just over $400 million. That's because a lot of the money for the Met Council actually comes, is passed through dollars from the federal government, which requires communities to adopt a fair housing policy. What this would do is provide more resources for our residents. There's a complaint process through a state agency, which is the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Some municipalities are often the first point of contact for residents that come here asking for assistance. What we would do is provide them information on our website and how to file a complaint with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. And also we're working on a flyer that would basically outline what their rights are and how they contact the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. And we'd work to get that translated into Spanish and other languages that are prevalent in this community. So what is fair housing? It's a law initially passed in 1968. It's Title 13 of the Civil Rights Act provides housing protections for protected classes, which are race, religion, national origin, people with disabilities and families with children. That was, it's been, a final amendment was passed in 1988. So protections in the context for the city, municipalities cannot overtly discriminate against citizens based upon protected classes. You, for instance, can't pass an ordinance which bars certain groups from living within the city or other areas of the city. Municipalities cannot inadvertently discriminate against citizens based on a protected class. So basically, we are supposed to foster inclusive communities that are free from discrimination. And that's what the municipality has an obligation to affirmatively further for housing within its borders.
Mr. Kurski?
Yes, sir.
That is all current federal law, correct?
Mayor and Council Administrator, that is correct. So right now, there is a federal law. This is all in place. We're supposed to be doing this. The Met Council basically says, you're supposed to be doing it, set up a pathway so your citizens can find out what state agency they go to. So basically, as I said, there's a agency, the state, right now. If you're a resident, have fun trying to find that. The idea is they can come to a central location with the municipality and get direction where to go. So fair housing policy sets out fair housing vision for the city with a policy statement, solidifies the city's practices regarding potential fair housing complaints. So fair housing information will be displayed on the website. One of them is an ADA transition plan, which the city's been working on. They completed a plan in 2008. Actually, a lot of that has been completed. We're now updating it to make sure that the parks and other areas meet the ADA. Buildings like this already meet the ADA requirement. And then we have to comply with the Minnesota Olmsted Plan. I had no idea what that was. So basically, that's a state plan for implementing its obligation to provide individuals with disabilities opportunities to live, work and be served in integrated settings. It comes from a Supreme Court decision of Olmsted versus League of Cities in 1999, which held that unjustified segregation of people with disabilities violated the Title II of the ADA. So that's something that we do through our building code already and our plan reviews. And through our planning documents, the 2040 Com Plan is a whole section on that. And again, fair housing information will be available in person at City Hall. So we'll have a flyer that provides what that information is. So it puts our existing practices, as the administrator said, into an official policy. So Housing Affordability Code and Project Analysis, we do that already for the Met Council. And talks about inclusive community engagement. That was a critical piece of the 2040 Com Plan. And again, remains part of our overall policy when we have meetings. So staff recommends that the City Council approves Resolution 201958, which adopts a fair housing policy for the City of Shakopee.
Counselor Whiting?
So when it all boils down to is this memorializes practices we either already do or should already be doing. It adds the layer of transparency so people can find where they can report an issue on that.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So basically, we're supposed to be doing all this under the federal law. And basically, it makes us the city kind of that first point in the community where people can go and basically find out where they need to go. I mean, right now, if someone comes to the counter, there really isn't a policy in that we send them to the state.
And this is part of the Met Council's livable communities where we can, we should have this in place already and I was surprised that we didn't. But after adopting it, it'll give us more access to the Livable Communities Grant Program.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So I believe it was in January or early February, we were officially adopted into that program. And when they were going through their adoption practices, they said the one piece that we were missing was this fair housing policy.
And we're going to put out some information in our habit here at City Hall. We're a clearinghouse. We don't really take any action, but we may direct them to enforcement agencies. Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct. So recently on Facebook, some people called Jill Whiting and said that there was potentially some discrimination against children in that project here, where they had been posted where children couldn't play outside. So that's pretty obvious, fair housing violation. We told the people, here's the person to contact at the state, and the management company took the signs down the next day. So it's...
That one was on the news, I think.
Yep, so there's a pretty active program at the state level. So if they find out something's going on, they're pretty, I think most of the professional management companies understand what fair housing means. And if someone violates it accidentally or with whatever the intention is, they can turn it around pretty quickly.
Counselor Contreras?
Well, it's very important information that we need to have handy, you know, and I appreciate that that is, you know, that we're handling that and we're doing that, you know, now and not later. And if it's okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution, our 2019-058, a resolution to adopt a fair housing policy for the City of Shakopee.
I have a motion.
Happy to second that.
And a second. Further discussion? Counselor Brennan?
I have some other questions. The five of us here all have different backgrounds. So are we all part of the fair housing policy? If I had an issue and I came, would I still have access to the fair housing policy? Or Counselor Lehman, or are we all part of that classification?
Mayor and council members, any resident or board member or whatever can come and access that information. I mean, basically, we will have information on our website that says, here's what fair housing means, here's where you go to find information at the state level, here's where the contact person is at the state level. And at the front counter, the information area will have a flyer that basically says, here's what fair housing means, here's the person you contact at the state level.
I have a few more. If we do not pass this, are we still, have been approved for, have we still adopted the livable communities?
Mayor and Council, we would still be a member of the Livable Communities, but we would not be eligible for any of their funding. So we would be the only city out of the entire metro area then that would not be receiving funds. If you remember, when we adopted that a little over a year ago, we were the only outlying city that was not participating in livable communities.
Okay. I have a, I have a couple more. On the policy, it states that the information's going to be recorded and maintained. So is that available for the public to take a look at and if they wanted to?
Mayor and Council, you mean the fair housing policy?
Yeah, well, it says, it says that the date, time, nature of the fair housing policy complaint and the furals information given by the city will be fully documented and archived for record-keeping purposes.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So if there, someone comes in asking for information and says there's a violation, we are obligated, in fact, probably should be doing that now, to record so that if the state comes back and says, did this person ever come in, we can say yes.
Okay. So can anybody come in and get information about?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Reynolds?
And I think that's the important point, Mayor and members of council. We should have had this a long time ago.
A while ago.
This is the first community that I've been associated with that didn't have a fair housing policy. This law was passed in 1968. And, you know, we're really, this is something that should have been done a long time ago.
Is there a reason why we haven't seen this, Counselor?
There's a very good reason why this policy was adopted in 1968, because there was plenty of discrimination, and it was actually encoded in some of the loan documents and things, and it's embarrassing.
Counselor Lehman?
I think intentional discrimination applies to everybody, not just protected class.
I think that's what he just said.
But, but the difference is, is that protected classes, it's illegal.
Yes.
It's illegal to be discriminative toward anybody.
No, that's incorrect.
Oh, so you can only discriminate against certain individuals, not others?
The, the...
The 1968 Act basically says, provides housing protections for protected classes. And those are classes based on race, religion, national origin, people with disabilities, and families with children.
If you're a single guy, go ahead and discriminate against him?
Well, that's really, that's really a federal law issue. That is not, we can't do anything about that.
Do you agree with that concept?
Well, Councilman, that's not the point.
Were you discriminated against on these aspects?
I, I'm not a...
It's, it's a federal law.
I'm not a parent with a child. I guess that doesn't cover me. I'm not disabled yet, so I'm not protected. I'm not, I'm not the protected class. It's truly odd to me that we want to guarantee that we don't discriminate, but in order to guarantee we're not going to discriminate, we're going to discriminate against a certain class.
That's what it says.
Counselor Whiting?
I, I know when we, when I took the rental training through the city police department for rental managers, a lot of this discussion was based on some of those fair housing and things like that through, so we're actually training it, and we don't even have a policy in place.
Mayor and Council, I mean, I think the administrator kind of hit the nail on the head. This has been in place since 1968 and amended all the way to 1988. Mr. Whiting researched this, we're one of the only cities in the entire metro area has not adopted a fair housing policy. And basically, it's just adopting the federal statute, I mean, this federal act that basically provides protections.
And it's important to understand, the reason for that was, is that white males weren't traditionally discriminated against. And regardless...
It's a new time.
Well, and then, Councilman, you can talk to your federal representatives, but this is a federal law that's currently on the books. We should have had this policy in place decades ago. And the reality is, is we're an outlier and we don't have it in place. Now, if you don't want, if you don't want it, I can understand that, but it's really something that needs to be addressed.
We have an opportunity, like we did with the third-party credit card ID required, to say, nobody will be discriminated against, period.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
I don't either, so let's put that in here. Instead of just trying to separate out a protective class of...
But that is federal law. That's the issue. But we can certainly make it...
The federal law is unconstitutional. You can't say, these people can't be discriminated against, but these people can.
All right, well...
I call a question.
Need a motion on the table.
We have one.
I apologize. Do we?
Yes.
A motion and a second.
All right, I apologize then. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. All right, next up, our financial review. Was that on consent?
Nope, it's consent.
That was on consent. And the city bill list for our review. And 11B Liaisoned Administration Report. Counselor Brennan?
Oh, let's see, I went to the Live, Learn, and Earn a week ago, and we learned about affordable housing. It was a much larger agenda, and we got through two, two of the agenda points. I went to the grand opening of, or the groundbreaking for my place, and we welcomed them to the community. And I went to the Parks and Open Spaces Task Force meeting, and we talked about Quarry Park, Lions Park, the riverfront, Huber Park, and Memorial Park. And there's a lot of really good ideas, and I can't, I look forward to having the total plan in hand and, and so that we at the task force and the Parks, the Parks Board can take a look at it, and then us finally. Because there's quite a bit of information, and there's a lot of work that's going on.
We're getting closer on that?
Well, I, we've looked at Quarry Park, Huber Park, the riverfront. So I think there's a lot of the things left, like programs and expenses and that type of thing.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Spuck last night, two outages. One was a contractor hit a wire. That's twice now. And the other one was a transformer. Both were minor impact for, one was two people and one was that area, but they were able to bypass it until it was fixed. We got a location for a storage tank on top of the bluff with land to pump, put in a well and space for a future treatment center if needed. They want to, I think they're going to make the tank a little bit oversized for the development that's projected into the future to the, on the west side. And then they got to do some preliminary well drilling to see what the capacity could be and stuff like that. So they approved going ahead and doing that, you call it, the pump checking to see if it's a viable location. They want to make sure that's going to be a viable location for pulling water out of the ground, that it's got the capacity and quality and stuff before they commit to the whole site for everything. But pretty, pretty sure that it's going to be, come out okay, and everything's going to be good for that location. So that's going to move ahead for next year, I believe, early next year. And then the other thing from this Spuck was, our staff said Spuck staffs got together and talked about the 21 points that came out of our joint meeting. And they were looking for an update from our staff, and I haven't seen one, so I said I would ask if our staff could put one together for us on them 21 points that were raised back and forth. That's all I have.
I have a question from Mr. Lehman. I noticed the squirrel count has been down, and I know they did a big...
The what?
The squirrel count?
Yes.
Now, they put wraps around a lot of the telephone poles in, at least lower town. It seems to be working well. Any, any feedback from, from that?
Well, the goal is to reduce the animal outages, I think it was, they could reduce it by 25 percent, that would be significant. The cost of what them wraps are isn't a whole lot, so they're kind of doing it in between other services. There's a lot of poles that actually do. I think there was like 3,100 or something like that. And there's other ways for squirrels to get onto the lines, other than climbing up the poles. They jump from tree branches onto the lines. And so that's kind of why they went, instead of a higher number of 50 percent or something, maybe 25 would be a good number. So time is going to tell, but I kind of looked at it, like, how is that really going to stop a squirrel? But apparently, they can't crawl up this stuff. It's kind of like the toboggan material. We'll see, we'll see how it works.
All right. Thank you very much. I just had one item on Saturday. Attended Canterbury, Canterbury Park. Their 25th anniversary of ownership was actually on Sunday, the 19th, but the Sampson family, 25 years, we wish them 25 more years, and we made it Canterbury Park Day. So a great day at the races, even with a little weather. And I'm not very good at picking horses, so I thought I'd tell you that.
I joined you that day, and neither am I. But we had a great tour from Mr. Sampson, some of the new additions to the Canterbury Park, and congratulate them on 25 years of doing business here in Shakopee. And my liaison meeting is tomorrow.
Counselor Contreras?
I haven't been here, so I have no...
Vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Mr. Reynolds?
I have a question. Can, can you guys turn in your losses since it's an official...
You know, Mr. Reynolds is watching us carefully.
I said I was not very good at it. I'd probably keep the other information private. But, Mr. Reynolds, administration report.
A couple things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, is that we do, we will actually have additional questions for Spuck. If you remember, we believe that we have resolved the issues in regards to the water plan, which was frankly just a side issue on the, on the bigger issue that we're meeting on. Staff is currently in the process of putting together more clarifications based upon the hearing that, that we had, a joint meeting with Spuck. So expect that in the, in the, in the future. Secondly, we are, we just finished our HR manager interviews today. And the reason I bring that up, it's not a position that comes to you for, for approval. But the reason I bring it up is that because in several of those, when, when the individuals have an opportunity to ask questions, they, they ask questions frankly that Chief Tate, Darren Nelson, myself, and Nate Burkett didn't have the answer to. And the reason is, is that because it was really dealing with the strategic vision of the city and the city council. And, you know, I came up with an analogy. About four years I arrived, and we had this great-looking running vehicle. We decided to rehab it, and we basically turned it into a hot rod. It's all ready to go, and it's running, and we got no racetrack. We don't know where we're headed. And so Mr. Burkett and I want to have the opportunity in the future to sit down and talk about strategic planning and talk about the importance of that, and, and try to get us to look farther out, not on project-by-project base, which are actually the easy things to do. You know, we're going to build this road, or we're going to put this park in in five years, whatever. But really talk more about the strategic direction of the organization as a whole. So I just ask you to, to have an open mind with that. Nate and I are going to be coming back to you in the future to talk about that in a little more depth, probably in a workshop setting, that will follow the workshop on our results from our survey, because I think that is the beginning step then of where we're going to head when it comes to strategic planning. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Item number 12, other business? Seeing none?
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 4th at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion.
Second?
Second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? We are adjourned at 9:27.